Great, so there should be a pop-up that lets you know that's being recorded. So I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen with you. Okay, I'm gonna just do a quick Action Together New Jersey Education Fund introduction. Show you a little bit about NJBOE.info. Introduce you to our wonderful speaker tonight, Mr. Rob Herman. He will be speaking, then we'll have a Q&amp;A session. And then there will be resources provided. So first of all, first of all, my name is Wynne. Most of you guys know me, so nice to see everybody again. So I'm the Executive Director of AT&amp;G Education Fund, a 501(c)(3) nonpartisan charity. Our mission really is to educate, engage, and empower New Jerseyans to be active participants in our vibrant democracy. And hopefully that's what you're here for tonight. And hopefully after this, you will feel engaged and empowered to do so. At any time, go to NJBOE.info and take a look at the resources that we have. So this is the first of our webinars that's open to the public. All of our work here with the New Jersey Board of Education Initiative is nonpartisan. What we really want to do is to provide education related to running for the Board of Education. So this is the first of many webinars we have planned. The next one is gonna be roles and responsibilities of a BOE member versus reality. So we'll have some experienced Board of Education members talk about that too. But on NJBOE.info, we will have resources for you. For example, you will see what towns have elections, when they have them. We have April and November out already. We will give you some must haves and also some nice to haves for campaigning as well. If you take a look, if you go on NJBOE under openings, we have county by county. For example, here is Salem County. It's hard to see in the screen here. I don't want you guys to strain your eyes. If you're like me, I just got bifocal, so yes, I'm gonna need it in order to see this. But we have lists of towns, for example, that have November school board elections. And so we are keeping abreast of all these elections coming up. And if there's no people listed, obviously, we're really, really early. But we wanna make sure we get out there out in front. If there's no one listed, there's a place to click to apply to join our training program. Underpinning all of this is our shared values. And I wanna thank the members of our advisory board for helping me finalize this. There's two things I wanna point out here. One is caring and kindness. That's the people we are. And that's the people we want to surround ourselves with in this initiative and through everything. We wanna work collaboratively with others. And we want people who wanna work with us in that manner, in a respectful way. And this is going to, you know, really apply and follow as they serve on the Board of Education. We want people who wanna work with others to better their communities. And I do wanna talk about nonpartisanship. I think a lot of us feel that this is why, you know, it's really been unfortunate that a lot of the nationalization of politics has trickled down to this level. We think that that's doing communities a disservice. So we wanna keep focused that this is our community and it's neighbor to neighbor over politics. So when I was thinking about this, I thought, you know, why did you move to your town? So when I lived abroad as an American expat, we had a choice to move back to United States or Australia, or the other one was Switzerland. And my then-husband and I decided that, no, we wanna come back to United States because our kids were entering high school. We thought that that was a great education. The US had the best education. And I've been to 49 states. And we decided that New Jersey, again, was gonna be our home. New Jersey has great public schools. And I remember at the time, we were picking between Milburn or Madison. So I know a lot of you, when you had school-aged kids, or what you do, or that you do right now, you're thinking of schools before you're picking that community. So we really think that that adjective in there, a blank public school is the foundation of our community. Is it a good public school? Is it a thriving public school? It's whatever we make it. And the Board of Education members make a big difference and play a big role. It really allows communities to thrive. When you're moving, you're looking at rankings. Good public schools bring in good young families, which leads to a lot of economic, you know, bustling Main Street shops. You see a lot of that. You also have community centers and YMCA's to accommodate those young families. And all of that means good property value. So there's so many reasons why we need a good public school education and good public school system. So the number one thing, when people approached us to say, hey, can you educate us about the Board of Education? There were concerns that jumped out right away. And tonight, Mr. Rob Herman will go over this for you. I did want you to know that I received these. And I forwarded to a Mr. Herman, Rob. So he will go over this, but I hear you. I hear the concerns, so we wanna make sure we address it. So tonight, I'm gonna let Rob introduce himself. But first of all, I wanna thank Rob. Rob is actually on vacation in Mexico. It's turned out into a working vacation. So I'm so appreciative that Rob's taking time out of his busy schedule to be with us tonight. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rob.
Great, thanks. Hey, everybody, good evening. Two things right off the bat. First thing is, I wanna thank all of you for coming out, coming to this because there's nothing greater than public service, and especially as it relates to educating children in our local towns in New Jersey. The second thing I wanted to talk about was, as Wynne pointed out, I'm actually down in Cancun in Mexico. There's a lot of people who are European here. I just, and let's just say, I understand that this is gonna be videotaped and that it's gonna be placed on YouTube. It can potentially go around the world. I'm not used to certain things that happen, I guess, in other places. For example, in Europe, people go down early in the morning to place towels down on beach chairs or on chairs by the poolside and reserving them for an entire day. So about sunrise, I went out, walked around the beach, came back, and saw there was a couple of towels. I thought they were left over from the night before. And I used one of them to wipe my sandy feet. So if the person whose towel that was happens to just by chance see this, sorry. Anyway.
So guys, if you can't tell, Rob has a sense of humor. So this is not gonna be dry at all. I told you guys, it's not gonna be boring, so.
Yeah, I tell you, especially when it comes to elections, there's so many weird things here. Let me go into, go into a little bit about my background. First thing is, I am a solo attorney. I practice down in Atlantic County. I have done work all over the place. But as far as legally, I'm known for criminal law, commercial litigation in particular, as it relates to this particular issue, election law. I've been doing election law for, wow, about 20-some years now. And I've been involved with campaigns going back in the age of five. So literally five decades of experience. As far as election law goes, I've been involved in, as it shows it on the screen, election challenges, campaign compliance issues. I don't do a ton with elect, but I deal with when there are problems. And so some people point out with some of the literature. I've been involved with civil litigation over elections, elected officials, candidate issues. Sometimes I'll get questions relating to ethical concerns, political concerns. We address those and also, of course, candidate compliance issues when I'm acting on behalf of that party or that candidate. Okay, after a little bit of that background, just say right off the bat, this is non-inclusive. It is a huge body of law. We're gonna try and get through a chunk of it. But it's one of those things that I know a lot. However, I also know I don't know a lot. So as a regular lawyer, what'll happen is, I have familiarity with a great number of topics dealing with election law. But like every other lawyer, somebody will come to me with a situation. I may not know the answer, and I have to look it up. And I'll do that. If you have a question, I don't know the answer. I have no problem with telling you. I literally don't know the answer, or I have to look it up. Most of the time, though, I'll tell you where I'm going to look up or where I would look for it. And that may give you a rough idea as well. Now, the last part of that slide says, I've seen a whole lot of crazy. I literally cannot explain to you how much crazy I have seen to make it on Santa's naughty list. I mean, just even hit like the bottom 10, nonetheless, the bottom 25 there. I should say, the bottom 25, nonetheless, the bottom 10. You have to do something horrific. I've seen everything from threats to get a weapon in the trunk of a car, candidate allegedly hitting another candidate with his pickup truck, taking stealing signs. I've seen things where they've been done inside the polling station. One guy in particular wore a Second Amendment t-shirt and said he was gonna draw down anybody that showed up in his house. Things get weird. It's an election. That's just by definition how it works. Okay, we're gonna talk about a number of different things. I'm gonna try and get through them relatively quickly. Again, this is not super in-depth, but not super light by the same token. We're gonna talk about some of the legal requirements relating to running for school board. We'll talk about what's required to be on the petition. Also, some of the things that you probably wanna deal with when you're, if you're trying to get signatures for nominating petition, including how many, what some of the financial requirements are. ELEC, not gonna go into great detail with ELEC. Election Law Enforcement Commission. My saying, Wynne, you're gonna have a whole class on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We'll just, we'll touch on it a little bit. We'll talk about politics and campaigning. Again, I've been involved with campaigns for literally five decades and 20 years of election law experience. We'll talk about some messaging requirements and some tips, you know, as far as some political tips. Big part of this too, this is part of the discussion for the, tonight is the elephant in the room, things to avoid when you're out campaigning or talking to people. And one of the things, and the last thing to keep in mind, just for now, as far as the program goes, and we'll talk about, what I refer to as Rob's rules later on. Legal does not equal political. In other words, you may have the ability to do something in court or to seek sanctions, but from a political perspective, that may not be the best way to go about it. Okay, let's talk initially, okay? What does it take to be a school board candidate? Well, the first thing is, is that you have to be registered to vote in the district in which you are seeking that candidacy for at least one year preceding the election. You must be able, by statute, able to read and write. You can't have, I can't say naughty criminal record, but there's a large number of crimes which exclude people. I don't imagine it pertains to anybody here in this group. I doubt there's any murderers among you. However, just in case, throwing it out there. You must also be able to vote, no qualified voter, 18 years older at the time of the election. One of the issues in New Jersey is, we used to have dual election voting. That's been done away with. So if you are, if someone is a member of the council or the mayor of a town, they cannot also be on the school board at the same time. Interestingly, is it also you can't have any contract with the school board? Or you can't actually have a claim as against the board? So for example, you can't be in active litigation with that Board of Election. And finally here is that while you are running as a candidate and also while you are serving as on that school board, you must remain a member of that district, okay? That includes, by the way, if you die along the way, nothing personal, not that it was gonna pertain necessarily, but you know, death removes you from serving.
Oh, by the way, I should, I should note, I see people taking notes. These slides will be on the website and will be provided to all meeting registrants too. So don't worry about that. I should have said that in the, in the get-go, Stuart. Sorry about that.
And also, I'm New Jersey born and bred. I talk fast, I apologize, and Wynne, slow me down or stop me if I'm going either too fast or too far astray. So anyway, what's, Wynne just put up on, on the board here is school board elections. Now, as you're, I'm sure aware, New Jersey used to have the majority of our school board elections in April or in off months. That changed some years ago, a few years ago. And they started being moved to November during the time of the general election. With that, and what we've seen, and we're gonna talk about this again at some length, is that the elections, while they are nonpartisan, and also we'll talk about that in greater detail, is that you start to see a little more partisan activity as it relates to school board just because of the timing of those November elections. All right, Wynne? Okay, now we're starting the basics on this one, okay? We're talking about how is, now you've decided to run, probably going to run. There's somebody's going to run. There are certain requirements as far as getting or beginning your campaign. The first thing is that you have to have what are called nominating petitions. They're either going to be from the clerk of the school board, if you're dealing with like an April or an off-month election, or if it's during the general, you're gonna be dealing with the county clerk. It requires for each person who is running 10 signatures. However, they can be combined as a whole. Let me explain what that means. In other words, you must, to be able to be a candidate, you must have your name, or sorry, people sign saying, not that they're gonna vote for you necessarily, but that they are accepting your candidacy or agree to your candidacy for school board in that particular district. Which also means, by the way, that they must actually reside in that district or reside by the time of the election. Or, or I shouldn't say, or that, that you also have to have, you could have more than one person as far as, who is running, up to three as a matter of fact, on the nominating position. They can be grouped together. Now, what they require by statute is 10 signatures. So just, and that could be literally 10 for, let's say, there's three of you, all three of you. However, as a general rule, I will tell you this. Here is the smart money. Number one, if, when you get the signatures, get more than 10. It could be nine plus your own. So if you're running with three other people, you know, using a little bit of stem here, it's seven plus three. I have seen it, and I have seen occasions when signatures will be invalidated or people's names on the petition will be invalidated. And somebody is stuck with insufficient number to be on the nominating petition. So don't just stop at 10. Keep going a little bit further. Also, again, one of those things that I have literally run into is, at the time that the nominating petition is signed by that voter, that, that the names of the candidate or candidates must be on the nominating petition. So I have literally had a scenario where somebody once asked me, again, no names, nothing, hey, look, can I add so-and-so's name to this nominating petition? The answer is, not a chance in hell, okay? Don't do it. Now, what happens is, once you get the requisite number of signatures on the nominating petition, you go ahead, you sign it, it's notarized. If you're dealing with an April school election, then you submit it over to the Board Secretary. If you're dealing with, again, as a general election, then you're gonna submit to the county clerk. Now, there's another interesting issue that comes up with this. Can you use common names? The answer is, for example, my name is Robert. So what I can do is, I can actually say Robert and then put in quotes, Rob Herman. That's permitted. What's not permitted, though, are suffixes or prefixes, like doctor or esquire, things of that nature, okay? Now, you can also have a slogan, which is permitted by law, nonpartisan school board elections. And what that means is that you're limited to three words. I am great, we are great, whatever. As long as they have no reference or connection with a political party or somebody else who is in office, let's say, from, from political standpoint. Okay, Wynne, next one, please? Now, I keep using, we keep using, all of us here are going to be using the term nonpartisan. School board elections in and of themselves are nonpartisan. What does that mean? What means there's no identity with a particular group, Democrat, Republican, Green, Libertarian, Martian, whatever, okay? However, what we've seen as we move towards those elections, the school board elections that happened in, during the general election in November, is that things have become a little bit more partisan, though they really shouldn't be, or not supposed to be. What is permitted, though it is not exactly looked well upon, it's frowned upon, is seeking political endorsement. So one of the issues that was raised is, can a candidate say, I am endorsed by whoever? And the answer is, yeah, they can. But there's some caveats to that. The first thing is, is that if you're dealing with an endorsement, let's say, for example, you're dealing with an endorsement by the teachers' union. Then what ends up happening is that you may, if you get on the school board, when you get on the school board, I should say, then what ends up happening is that you will likely be precluded from dealing with anything involving collective bargaining or negotiations relating to those teachers, the teachers' union. Same thing as well with anybody who's giving endorsement, anybody who gives you endorsement. And let's say, for example, maybe they have some business with the school board, then you may have, there may be some issues as far as you participating with the school board relating to it, okay? The other thing is, and Wynne and I have talked about this at some length, is that even though it isn't technically forbidden at this particular juncture, it is a gray area in the law. And as we start to see more and more partisan-type activity in school board elections, what's going to end up happening, what may invariably end up happening, is it's going to go to court to get challenged. And that's when people get lawyers like me involved. And what we do is, somebody says, you know, hey, they were endorsed by, you know, the, you know, the orange party of whatever, okay? Of Amsterdam. Then what happens is, I may say, okay, I may go to court. I may seek actually to say that under the statute, NJSA, New Jersey statutes annotated 1960-1, I may come in and say, that is not permitted. And that candidate may now be stuck with a whole bunch of printed materials that can't be utilized. Or you may be dealing with something where it may call into question the results of the election. Now, whether there are other kinds of violations, and somebody asked, I think along the way here, what happens with, if there, there may be violations. There are complaints that can be filed. There is a school ethics commission, is an administrative board. They do receive complaints. There's an example, very blown up example of one, where somebody was putting election signs on school property. And then there was a question of whether it was appropriate or not. Somebody complained about it, and there was an issue of applying. Now, there's also, ELEC, we're gonna go into a little bit greater detail on this. If we're gonna talk just briefly, Wynne, can I just talk briefly now about campaigning on school property?
Yeah, that's under point three, ELEC.
Yeah, absolutely. ELEC, we think more of in terms of finances. But let's talk about campaigning for a second on school property. This is an issue that's, that's been raised. I know there's some concern as well. The general rule is, is that there's three general rules. First one is, is it isn't forbidden. There may be reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. It's something that's covered under the First Amendment. However, candidates can actually, or as a general rule, can campaign on school grounds or during school events when much of the parent body may be involved or there. The, however, school boards generally have, or oftentimes, as you say, since they generally, oftentimes have regulations dealing with this as far as permitting people to campaign on school property. And again, they can't absolutely forbid it, but they can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions during the school day. They can be more strict. Usually the ones after school hours, sports are not real happy about advanced restrictions on First Amendment activities, okay?
So guys, listen, we will go back to this slide, cuz I know that this is your concern. So we are gonna use those examples that you guys sent to me, and we will address this again. But two things on here that you should pay attention to. TPM at the very bottom, that's the time, place, and manner that Rob was talking about. And then the other one is, it is nonpartisan, but you can seek political endorsements. Now, whether or not, you know, it is permitted, but whether or not we recommend that, you know, that's a different issue. But I wanna make sure that you guys just take a second to, you know, to focus on this part here cuz I know it's gonna come up again.
I'm gonna add two things just before getting into the ELEC here. There's, there's the three. First of all, dealing with the TPM, time, place, and manner restrictions. The second thing is, is that candidates should not be soliciting funds or campaign contributions on school grounds or at school events. There are, there is an exception to that, and that deals with if the property is utilized for private purposes or needs for private purposes. Otherwise, it's absolutely forbidden. The third thing is, and this is one thing actually, the second one, I'm not as concerned with you guys. The third one, we just have to make sure, because if you're involving children in political campaigns, like I was as a kid, is that kids cannot hand out literature during the school day. There is an absolute prohibition on the intentional distribution of campaign materials or literature by children during school. All right, sorry about that.
No, thank you.
What Wynne's put up here is just some resource. I can tell you this, and again, I do not have a black belt, for example, dealing with ELEC reporting. I can tell you this as a general rule, and I think I said I'd tell you this twice, but now I'm gonna say it the third time here. I tell you this, is that when it comes to ELEC stuff, the state people are really nice. They've actually been pretty decent for local campaigns, in particularly school board, because usually you're not dealing in, you know, in the United States, in Michigan, craziness, you know? So for the most part, they're gonna be able to help you. And the website will be something that you can work your way through.
By the way, we will have a separate ELEC training as well, you know, coming up, probably next month or the month after. So no worries on that.
All right, let's talk a little bit about, before we get to the elephant in the room, so about politics and campaigning, okay? My daughter Jessica is the youngest of my two. She's 19. I asked her in the last two elections for school board, and this is in preparation for today's conference here, is, who did you, how did you pick the person for a school board? First of all, of course, I asked her, she voted, said yes, for school board. And I said, well, who did you pick? And she said, well, you know, I only really voted one person. I said, really? And how did you pick that one person? She goes, I knew his son. You know, we know, I knew, I knew him from school. That was Mr. so-and-so, Mr. Smith, okay? So when you're dealing with school board elections, it's a little bit different than when you're partisan-type elections. Because with the partisan ones, when you go in, let's say, again, we're talking about in a general election, is that when you look at the ballot, it's, it's what, you know, they're on different teams. School board isn't necessarily a different team. It's not identified specifically on the ballot itself when you go in and vote. And most of you, by my perfect guarantee, all of you are voters here, is that you look and it's got people with a slogan and certain names, usually collectively running as a group. So the important thing is with school board elections is the Jessica rule, which is, recognition is the important thing. It's that name recognition. My father was in the assembly for a number of years, starting at the time of age of five. And so I worked with campaigns up through about the age of 17. And he used to keep bumper stickers on his car all year round, and even off-year elections, off-year from elections. And I asked him why he did that, and he explained to me, he said, in politics, he said, even if they don't know what you stand for, even if they don't really know much about it, it's the fact that they recognize the name in and of itself, or somebody recognizes the name, and that is a certain percentage of voters. So in these kind of elections, because we're not aligned with teams, so to speak, that is extraordinarily important. Also, one of the things to remember is that school board elections generally are not like really hotly contested crazy type affairs. Now, school board meetings, eh, sometimes it gets a little weird. But the exceptions to the school board rules for elections is that sometimes you have hotly contested races in the news. Sometimes there's bond issues and taxes that people are worried about that, you know, that it's going up, up, and up. They wanna control it, and then it gets, you start hearing a little bit more about it. And sometimes, and this is something all of us are familiar with, is there's a political or social agenda, and somebody's throwing bombs. And throwing bombs, figuratively, not literally, hopefully. And that, you know, that kind of stuff draws out publicity and also brings the election to the forefront occasionally. Now, let's talk about campaigning a little, okay? And I promise you, we'll get a little more of the legal stuff as well. Campaigning, the important thing is getting your message out, getting out to people. Now, Wynne, you're gonna have a discussion on get up, vote, right?
Yeah, we'll have GOTV training for vetted candidates through our program.
All right, awesome. So we're just gonna touch upon this instead of really going into any great, into great detail with it. Number one, you wanna get your name out there, face-to-face in your community. Go meet people, go talk to them. Matter of fact, they're voters, they're parents who have kids, they have concerns. You wanna run, I can't imagine there's anybody that, everybody here, I can't imagine, something looks like a double name. Let me rephrase that. Everybody here, I, is virtually guaranteed that they're concerned. That's why you're here. You're concerned about what's happening. You wanna make sure children are educated. So you wanna go out and you wanna talk to people. You wanna find out what the constituents, what's important to people. You also wanna be able to, to be able to discern or say, why is it that you're running in a relatively simple way? As of, and I don't wanna denigrate anyone, but you really have to, I don't wanna say dull it down, but, but you wanna make it sure that everybody understands it cuz they deserve to understand what the message is that, that you're getting at. What the reason is that you should be elected to the Because they deserve to understand what the message is that, that you're getting out, what the reason is that you should be elected to the school board. Now, the next thing it says, grace will exit in conversations, let me explain what that means. So for you guys here, I don't know all of you, I don't know a lot of you. I can tell you this is that if there's a question as to like nerd kingdom, I may not be the king, but I'm definitely in the royal court. When it comes to nerds, I'm in a good conversation, I will be there for hours. Okay, and if you're campaigning, that can be death in and of itself. So as much as you wanna talk about quantum physics and ghost particles, realistically, the fact is, is that you need to move between people and learn how to gracefully exit conversations. It's, it is a trick of politics. And again, for those of us who like the total nerds, it's like there is just, it's a horror show when you, you really wanna sit there and talk to somebody for hours, but you really can't. From a political perspective, when you're not campaigning, absolutely, I'll sit there and talk Dungeons and Dragons with you for hours. Now, uh as far as getting the message out, getting out your name, things of that nature. Number one, get a website. And if you're like me, uh enlist someone who's younger to help you. Uh the fact is, is that I have certain talent levels and I can tell you what, what it's not, and that is creating websites. When you go out and you meet people, you go door to door, you go to us uh to an event, you go to a soccer game, whatever it is, and you're meeting people, you get to meet and interact with these different people and hopefully get to meet quite a few of them. But nothing quite gets out the message to a wider array of people than a website. What it does too is it, it's like, for example, for my office I have, it backs up, you know, who you are and what you stand for and can go into greater detail as well. Along those lines, that's why we use literature sometimes, a snail mail, people still use that stuff. Social media extraordinarily important, though it comes with some caveats for later on. And last part of this is actually is you wanna enlist others to help you. The more people that have a vested interest in your campaign, the better off we all are. Because we want good people on the school board and want others to help out and reach out to their friends. Like for those of us who are a little bit older, the old clarinet.
Hey, Rob, I just wanted to just check in, we are at thirty-six minutes after the hour. So um I just wanna let you know that.
Yeah, and I apologize if, again, like just go on and I could talk about campaigns and elections forever. Okay, now, talking about campaign materials here. This is one of those things that uh is required by statute. It has to say, if you're dealing with a written material or anything where there is a dollar purchased uh or used for something, it has to say paid for by whomever it is, the person, the campaign, uh people to elect, you know, Schmitty for whatever, school board. And it has to say where the business address of that, those folks are. Also, if you're dealing with something where it's uh, let's say, sometimes you see with, uh let's say, contrarian, put it nicely, uh let uh materials, it also has to say who they are and that they're not affiliated. Okay? Now, there's a couple of other things here, just wanna talk and just touch on very briefly. We all see negative campaigns, we all hear it. Every, every four years, the presidential election, nothing, go on, go on, goes. I can tell you this, in, in larger campaigns, when you're dealing with partisan elections, negative campaigning works, that's why they do it. That's actually statistically why they do it. Because it tends to be, negative tends to remember better than a positive message. However, when you're dealing with school board elections, because you're dealing with recognition of a person and not identification with a party or with a group, then what ends up happening is, is that when you do negative, go negative, it's not uncommon that uh what happens is uh that you're amplifying that person's name, you're saying it over and over and over again. Uh just by way of example, there was a race I'd helped with a number of years ago and there was a negative message, but it kept saying my candidate's name. I'm like, it's the greatest thing ever, that's like free advertising, you know, because all people remember is the name. Okay, now, you can also put in, as we talked about, what's allowed, even though it's nonpartisan, it can be endorsed by sitting elected partisan officials, Republican, Democrat, orange, green, libertarian, whatever may be. However, the concern is, is one, it may not be lawful at some point and all it takes is one patch of litigation. And I've been to the appellate division and the lead case dealing with recounts is mine from, from a couple of years ago. Uh you can revamp the entire sys- system at literally one shot. And you don't wanna be sitting on thousands of dollars in campaign materials, which suddenly you can't use. The other part of it as well is, and, and this, these are perfect examples. Now, I imagine that whoever the candidate is, wouldn't be aligned with these people. However, what you may find is, is that uh as well as anytime we're dealing with electoral media, you may now, once you're endorsed by them and you are advertising based on it, you are now tied to them. And that could be a problem in and of itself from a political perspective. Uh for those of you who are uh political fans, you know, you see that stuff and we hear about it most recently in Congress.
Okay, so I just wanna interject and just, Rob, did I hear you right? That in these two examples forwarded to us, this is permitted by the current laws as of today, as of today's recording. Um but that it can change, but is that, did I hear you correctly on that one?
Absolutely, the important thing again here to remember, I just wanna point out again, as when, as you stated, repeating back to what I said, which is, I wanna underscore it. This can change, you know, at any point during an election. And the more of this that we see, the more likely it is that the courts are going to have a say in what's gonna happen.
Okay, so I, I also wanna add, as, as Action Together New Jersey Education Fund, even though that this is permitted right now, given today's laws, we do not recommend this. We want to keep it nonpartisan. And even if you can seek political endorsement, we highly want to advocate for keeping the politics out of it. So that's our po- position. Rob, there was also information sent regarding defamation, so we wanted to cover that next.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh and it's the elephant in the room. We, we see this stuff, it's in the media, it gets put into the newspaper and there's sort of a reason that gets put in the newspaper. And that's because it's relatively rare. It's often alleged, but relatively rare. Let's talk again in greater detail about defamation essentially is a uh a, a false or misleading statement of a fact uh about someone that defames them, basically. Uh material that affects them one way or the other, and denigrate, it, it's a variety. I don't wanna say it's elusive by way of definition, but we're gonna get sort of down to the legal rabbit hole, basically you're saying something false about somebody. You're doing it intentionally or with a reckless disregard for the truth. Okay? It's out there, but as a general rule, you don't see it. I think I've seen over the course of time, politically, I've seen one and I've seen others. Uh rarely I've had in my office, they're just, a lot of times people will say, he defamed me or he slandered me or libel, wherever you wanna put defamation, slander, libel or part of defamation. What ends up happening is, is lawyers cost money, general rule. Sometimes lawyers will take, for example, personal language will take cases on a contingent fee. It is upon the rarest of rare circumstance that, that someone, a lawyer, will take a defamation case on a contingent fee. And the reason is, is because winning them is extraordinarily rare. Just to give you an idea, the standard of evidence that somebody has to prove defamation, in other words, the plaintiff has to prove defamation, is by clearing convincing evidence. So on one hand, you've got proof beyond a reasonable doubt, everybody certainly knows that law and order, criminal cases, right? And then what you have is, then you have uh preponderance, which means a little bit more, in other words, fifty-one forty-nine, so to speak, just a little bit more than fifty, a little more than the other guy. Clear and convincing is the standard of evidence in New Jersey that the state utilizes to terminate parental rights. So that should give you a rough idea as to how well regarded this tour is. And that's deals with specifically with public figures. If you're running as a candidate, if you're on the Board of Elections, uh upset Board of Elections, if you're on the Board of Education, you are a, almost guaranteed to be a public person for purpose of defamation. So do you have to be worried about it? Not impossible. But somebody, just to give you a rough idea, somebody uh once came to me and said, you know, I take my, by the way, ask me as a lawyer, you know? And they said, I take my car, run off on the sidewalk, of course, it's New Jersey, because I say, get this kind of sample. I take my car, run it up on the sidewalk, hit three people, drive it back into the street, knock over a woman with her baby, kill them. He said, can I sue them for damaging my vehicle? And the answer is absolutely. Winning, though, is a completely different issue. As a general rule, because lawyers are expensive, for somebody to go forward with defamation with an actual complaint and require somebody to go to court, you're talking about, somebody came to my office, you're probably looking, I'm gonna say, you have twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars to litigate this or more. Okay, so just, you know, again, that we see a lot of it in the news. You know, the reason you see it in the news is because it's not really an everyday occurrence. And
Rob, so I just wanna reiterate your point here on defamation. I think everyone, there was a question in the chat about what it is, I hope you guys have an understanding of what is right now. But again, it is rare, but it has happened. And it is costly to have to defend, even though the chances of them winning are, you know, it's a high standard like Rob had said. But how to avoid it, the key there is stating something as the truth versus opinion. So make sure you state, it is my opinion that, and that should cover you, right, Rob?
The answer is yes. Because what defamation is in and of itself, you're saying that something is factual. Uh for example, just to give you a rough idea, a- again, Wendy's absolutely correct. If you state something as opinion, it's my opinion that the chance of actually having a defamation problem or issue is marginal. And then you add into it, you're just increasing the lottery chance of actually having it happen as against you. Uh just to give you a, a perfect example, dealing with some of this stuff, a way to get around it. There is a Fox News personality that says, I'm just asking the question. Instead of making a statement of fact or otherwise, this person now, it does a very nice job at discipline from a lawyer's perspective of how not to get your network in trouble for defamation issues.
Hey, Rob, we need to uh wrap this up because we're at forty-six minutes after the hour. And I wanna make sure we get to questions.
All right, let me just talk very quickly, social media. Uh again, we talked before, if you're with some, you know, if you tweet, retweet something or you forward it with Facebook or otherwise, you can be tied to that person, just make sure they haven't been reading or don't have a big dissertation on the protocols, the elder of Zion, okay? You know, you may be stuck with that person forever. Go back through, if you're running, go back through Instagram, Facebook or otherwise. If you were in college, you'd be doing uh beer bong hits or Jolo shooters, you know, in Cancun, Mexico. Then uh you know, probably shouldn't be on your social media. I can tell you just by way of example, I had a case recently involving a young lady. I looked her up, first thing you do is you Google somebody and I found her with a white power, you know, with a picture of doing a white power sign. Now, that's gonna affect you guys, but you know, people are gonna look. If it's out there, somebody's gonna find it.
And one point here before we go to the last slide is that before you amplify any social media, whether it's a post or a tweet, you need to vet that source before you amplify it because you will be tied and responsible for the for, for the source that you're simply amplifying, okay? So make sure that all of you candidates that are getting ready and are thinking about running or all of you out there helping candidates, look at your social media because that's really your online resume. So clean it up, review it, um stand by your truth and stand by your ethics. But again, I would say moving forward, vet your sources before you amplify it. And we wanna close with this, I know where you guys have been so good with hanging in there. Um but Rob has these rules that we'll go over and then we'll have time for questions.
Okay, I'm just gonna touch on these very quickly. Legal doesn't equal political. In other words, you may have, my, my brother, he asked me about if I'm gonna crosswalk, a truck kicks, hits me and you know, can, you know, does that really fair, is that right? They say, well legally, the truck can't, you're in crosswalk, truck has to stop, but he's dead. Said, so same thing with politics. Just because you have the legal right to do something doesn't mean it's a smart move politically. One thing to always remember when you're dealing with people, and this deals specifically with school board meetings and people you meet while campaigning. Understand that you can't stop crazy, you can't cure stupid. Except that there are those who are out there who just, you know, just exit as gracefully as you can, okay? You, you, when you're doing legal protection work, you know, we talked about defamation earlier, you can't guarantee that that you're immune. However, you can limit the likelihood that it's going to cause you a problem later on. And that goes into the next rule, it's a golden rule of politics, which is don't give your, your adversary, the person who's running against you ammunition. Don't help them out. We generally recommend, especially with school board elections because of what you're doing and you're helping children, is recommend no ad hominem attacks. What that means is, don't attack people, attack ideas. And that is the better way of going about things. And I wanna just jump down to the last one. Okay, for those who understand a little bit yet to share. The most important thing, particularly for a school board election, okay? Just don't be a jerk, be a match, be a lady, be a gentleman, but, but be a decent human being. Because that's the kind of people, you're the kind of people that we want on the school board. People who are generally concerned about the kids and are good people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rob. Um the last slide that I have are resources. Again, this will all be in the slide set, it will be on the website, it will also be on the, with the video on our website and YouTube. Um but these are some of the resources that we have curated. You know, we're not here to reinvent the wheel, these are great resources that I think all candidates just take a look at. Um so with that, we're gonna stop and we're gonna open up for questions. Um Rob, just take a minute to uh have a sip of water. I wanna thank Rob for spending the time. I know it's a lot of statutes and a lot of things, but um hopefully you guys saw some value. Again, all of this will be provided to you. Um I wanna take some questions live. I have some questions that people put in, which I'm happy to go to. But if anyone has any questions, go ahead and use your reactions at the bottom and do raise hands and I'll call on you. Go ahead, Monica, unmute and you're first.
Sorry, I've been very excited to ask my question, so I was jumping right on that reaction button. But um yeah, I'd, I'd love to know your opinion. First of all, I'm very excited that there is going to be a nonpartisan place uh for people to get information. Because I felt like uh through this last election cycle, um there was a group that was incredibly organized that was representing a completely different value set. Um and it felt like we, you know, people were scrambling to try to find information. Um and to, you know, and then it started being, you know, well, do you lean on, you know, the Democratic committees, et cetera? And um and it became, then it became partisan, right? So that's not good either. So having a nonpartisan place is going to be incredibly useful for us. But how do you suggest like communicating, you know, the resources out um in a, in a way that isn't partisan, right? So you know, it needs money or funding or articles written about it, you know, you can't rely on all social media. So do you, do you have anything that's worked in the past that, that you suggest that you've seen um to communicate out, you know, a resource center for people?
Is this for Rob or is this for me?
Oh, it's Rob, sorry, yeah, I mean, I know it's legally, I, I, I don't know how, you know, legally it's a question. But I mean, again, it's, I don't know if you've seen anything through your work that people have done that has really worked out well for them.
I can tell you a couple of things. First thing is, is money is always an issue in campaigns, it just is. Uh and the, the thing I keep hearing is never enough. What I'd recommend is, first and foremost, continue the association with Winn. Group does fantastic work. I just can't explain to you how much I appreciate what she's done and what her, what uh ETNJ has done over the course of time for our elections and democratic processes. As far as soliciting funds, again, we talked a little bit about, you can't do it here, other than that, and there are some dos and don'ts. I'd recommend a website and also recommend email. Emailing is relatively inexpensive, ask for small dollar donations, you know, one buy ten dollars. You don't need hundred dollar donations for school board. Small dollars win elections in school boards, they just do, it's a general rule. And that's really the best I can do, other than direct you really back to win.
I also wanna add in here, Monica, we have, so NJBOE.info is one place where we're gonna have all the candidates listed by county in every town. And it's gonna include incumbents that follow our shared values and also new uh candidates running for elections. And so, you know, Monica, if you have someone in Burlington County in your town that you would recommend who has our shared values, a lot of it's gonna come through referrals, but once we get there, e- even if we don't know them, there's a candidate vetting uh process with the board. So we are gonna vet the, the, the candidates, but I wanna touch on the nonpartisan, the, the data that you said. We develop our own independent data. It's ours, it's not with the Democratic Party or the Republican It's ours. It's not with the Democratic Party or the Republican Party. And so we strip it out of any modeling, if they lean Democrat or they lean Republican, we have pure voter data. And so for our vetted candidates, they will have that, but NJBE dot info is one website. The other one is going to gear for voters, and it's kind of be called Board of Education dot vote. So the, we did a Google search, and the top phrase that came in for, um, Board of Education voting is. Literally Board of Education, that was the number one. We got the dot vote, um. And so when they type in, who do I vote for Board of Ed, it's a low information campaign like Rob had mentioned, right? So we're hoping to have those two sources for people to get to, so I hope that answers your questions. Um, let me go to one question that was posed before, and then I will, um, call on Mike next. Um, Rob, can you use the public school directory for campaigning? So a lot of schools have the parental school directory, whether online or published as a book in the old days. Are you able to use that to, for part of your campaigning?
General rule is yes. However, let me take a step back from that. If you are currently on the Board of Education and you get everybody's emails from the Board of Ed or email addresses. From the Board of Education, you're utilizing a board resource, that in and of itself is impermissible. However, where something is a public record, uh, then absolutely, go for it. I recommend it actually, and I mean, think about, these are your voters. These are the people who are going to make the difference in the election, and hopefully bring you into office.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike, you're up. You're muted.
Mike, you're still muted.
Okay, just, just a quick plug, um, I'm the founder of the New Jersey Public Education Coalition. And we are collaborating and, uh, we are in conjunction with ATNJ. Uh, about this, uh, the entire school board issue. Um, we've been, uh, in the fight for, I have been for the past two years. Um, the coalition activated back in the, in May of last year. We're now about a thousand strong. Um, and we are about, our slogan is basically engage, educate, and collaborate. So we're trying to engage more stakeholders, and by do, and doing that, we're educating them. Uh, on what is misinformation, disinformation, propaganda, and flat-out lies. And we're also creating collaborations, not only at the individual level. But we're cutting a lot of the organizations like ours and ATNJ to start collaborating. Because we have a lot of organizations out there, uh, that are like-minded, trying to do the same process. But they're all going in different directions. So we want to get them all collaborating so that we can, you know, put our efforts forward in the most economic way. And not be repeating each other's efforts. Um, just an idea for those of you who are thinking about running. Very, very scary statistic. Forty percent of incumbents last year did not run for reelection. And a lot of it is because you've seen it, intimidation, harassment, threats of defamation suits. And basically, that's the tactic that's used by the other side. So it's imperative that we let our candidates know that we're behind them, that we support them. Um, our coalition can provide a candidate with a one-on-one mentor. Who is someone who's either run a campaign, been a Board of Education candidate before, and can help them one-on-one. And lead them through the campaign process. We have a lot of educational materials. Yeah, go ahead, you guys not much time. Um, we're out there.
If you have a question for Rob.
Yes.
Right, feel free to jot in the link to your group in the chat.
I do have a question for Rob.
Okay, let's make it quick, because we're like two minutes before the hour.
Okay, School Ethics Act does say that incumbents can't accept anything of value from any political party pack, et cetera. Um, but does it have any real weight? Because there's also a clause that says, if they just say they didn't realize they were being influenced, or that someone was trying to, they're off the hook.
Here's my perception of it, based on the current state of the law, it is in flux. And what that means is, is that it doesn't have a ton of teeth yet. However, I webber, however, 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 I can't speak. Uh. The answer is maybe, but just as of literally this very specific moment in time. Not a great help. However, two weeks from now, you never know.
Um, Rob, we have a question that was entered in earlier. I want to ask you. Can public comments and social media posts be used to highlight the differences between. Opposing Board of Education candidates?
Absolutely. Anything that's out there, i- that it's in the public realm can be utilized. Matter of fact, one of the things that we talked about, when we've had some great discussions about this, is that. Your social, uh, I'm sorry, or your, your electric his, electronic history, you know, going back, what you have on Facebook, Instagram, whatever it may be. That stuff that's out there in the public realm can easily be used against, so in other words. It's good for the goose, good for the gander, if they've got stuff out there, and you want to use it during the course of your campaign. By all means, but just remember, again, you want to go back to those rules of politics, which is, are you amplifying your candidate over your own message? Or you're just demonstrating it as far as, here's what I stand for in distinction to the other, nothing bad, and then you can always hold them to it. And that's, you know, a very important part of politics and campaigning.
So in the comments, and I want to relate this to the defamation lawsuits that we had, the one in Somerset County. Um, Jen had mentioned there that the defendant is the losing. She lost the Board of Education race, but she's having to spend five figures to defend herself. So relating to the question that I just said, don't give people ammunition, so. Uh, review your social media and don't give them ammunition. And number two, if you are going to use public social media posts or public comments. To differentiate between the Board of Education candidates, be sure to go back to what Rob said earlier. There is truth versus opinion, right? So you can definitely, um, minimize your own risk, and like he said, there's no guarantees. But minimize your own risk by saying, it is my opinion that, okay? So that's some of the watch outs, and if there's anyone with any questions, make sure you raise hands, but I have one more question while we're waiting.
Wait, I have one last thing to that. A- as a lawyer, one of the things that I will do is, I will take somebody's words and use it against them. So, same thing as a candidate, show the source, uh, Facebook post, April tenth. Two thousand and twenty-one, and then have a copy of the actual quote there, and then stick it to them, using it.
But, but, but you, if I'm hearing you right, Rob, but balancing that with how much do you want to amplify your opponent's name? And getting their name out there versus yours, right? So it's just something that you keep in mind. I have a legal question for you, well, legal, ethical, but. Um, someone sent in a question earlier saying, a sitting assemblyman that is a current, uh, member of the state legislature. Um, not only paid for the flyer, but hosted and promoted a la- a rally. With Board of Education candidates. Is this legal, ethical, and appropriate?
Interesting question, and I say interesting because realistically, is it truly legal? Probably not. Is it something which is permitted so far? Probably. Is it the right thing to do? That's a judgment call that you have to make. And if you're going to make these, if you're a candidate for school board, you make these kinds of choices. The question you ask yourself, and this again, when something you and I have talked about, is when you're dealing with somebody who's. Let's say you're not acting appropriately, you say yourself, these are the kind of people, or is it the kind of person? Who flouts the rules, who, who doesn't care about norms, isn't, doesn't have these kind of concerns. I'm saying specifically in this example, but just generally overall, is that if you have somebody who is an incipient rule breaker. Is this the kind of person you want making decisions about our kids?
And I have one more question that was submitted, and if anyone else has any questions, go ahead and pop in in the chat, or raise your hands. Um, can you discuss or mention names of current school employees while campaigning? Uh, for the Board of Education?
I generally don't recommend it. I mean, if you're dealing with, if you're dealing with something with some endorsement, then you can run into some issues. If you're saying, if you're pointing out specific people or positions where it's obvious, like the superintendent. You know, again, be a mensch, you know, attack ideas, not people. And you, you will find yourself doing much better as a school board candidate than you would otherwise. I don't recommend.
So listen, we are five minutes past the hour. Thank you so much. I'm so sorry it went over. Um, but I wanted to get all those questions answered. Um, I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight, and thank those who signed up, but you're ill. Um, I'm so sorry that you're ill. I hope you're feeling better soon. We have a couple of people with flu and COVID, so everyone take care of yourselves. Um, and also, we want to thank you all for, for tuning in. As a result of this, everyone who registered, whether you're here or you couldn't make it for last minute, um. Conflicts, and thank you for looping me in on that. You will get a copy of the slides, you will get a link to the recording. Um, I also want to send it out a poll to get your opinion about what you thought of this. I also want to ask you, what other trainings do you think we need that we can provide? We do have a list of trainings, so I want you to take a look at that and say, okay, this is good, I would attend it or not. And then here's what I think I would need, so that poll will be coming out soon, so give me a couple of days. The video has to buffer and all of that stuff, but that should be on, so. Um, I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I hope you found that to be of value to you. And I hope it all laid a lot of fears. And lastly, I hope you walk away armed with information. And armed with the knowledge that there are things that you can do to give yourself a really good campaign. And to help people to run to serve their community. So thank you so much, everyone, for joining us tonight, and I'm going to bid you guys a good night. Thank you so much. Thank you, Rob. That was so wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Take care. Good luck to everybody here.